Are you doing it or are you doing it, Simon? I'm happy to start. He's done it.
Excellent. And now we are live. Good evening, councillors, ladies, gentlemen and all. I am councillor Emmett McKenna, Chair of the Planning Applications Committee. I would like to welcome you to the Planning Applications Committee, which is being held online as permitted by the Coronavirus Act 2020. The public and the press can observe the meeting by following the link from our website. Agenda papers, including the update pack, have been published on the council website. To help those observing the meeting, we will be presenting some information on slides as we progress through the agenda. Before we start, councillors attending will be asked to introduce themselves. This is for the benefit of the public and also to ensure that all are in attendance as expected and that they can both hear and speak to the meeting. Members have been asked to make me aware if they wish to speak on an item in advance. This does not prevent additional contributions being made, but I ask all councillors to notify me when they wish to speak in the chat section of their screens and then wait to be called. When not speaking, please will councillors put their microphones on mute. When called to speak, please unmute your microphone and pause briefly to allow for the slight time delay. It is possible that loss of connection may happen, but as long as we have five members still in the meeting, we will be quiet. I will now do a roll call of councillors. As I say your name, could you introduce yourselves to the meeting? I am councillor Emmett McKenna, Chair of the Planning Applications Committee, and I represent Whitelands Ward. I will call on the other members of the committee alphabetically. Councillors, please will you state your name and the ward you represent? Councillor Devine.
Ricky Devine, Libden councillor for Tynehurst Ward.
Thank you, councillor Devine. Councillor Lovelock?
Joe Lovelock, Labour councillor for Norcott Ward.
Thank you, councillor Lovelock. Councillor McKeon?
Good evening, Chair. I'm Ruth McKeon. I'm councillor for Churchward.
Thank you, councillor McKeon. Councillor Page?
Good evening, councillor Tony Page, Lead Member for Environment Planning and Transport and Deputy Leader of the Council.
Thank you, councillor Page. Councillor Robinson?
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, everyone. Councillor Simon Robinson, Conservative councillor for Peppard Ward.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. Councillor Rowland?
Yes, hi. Councillor Karen Rowland, Labour councillor in Abbey Ward and the Lead Member for Culture, Heritage and Recreation.
Thank you, councillor Rowland. Councillor Sukala?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Chair. I'm councillor Ishaokalek, councillor for Caverton, Vice Chair of Planning Applications Committee.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Stanford-Bale?
Good evening. Thank you, Chair. Councillor for Peppard Ward and Opposition Lead for Strategic Environment Planning and Transport. And I'm a consultant.
Thank you, councillor Stanford-Bale. Councillor Josh Williams?
Good evening, Chair. Yes, councillor Josh Williams, Park Ward.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Thank you, councillors. I would also like to introduce you to the officers who are in attendance tonight. And I believe they may be on the slides with a picture. Julie Williams is our acting planning manager. She is our senior planning adviser and she is responsible for the work of the planning team. She will advise me tonight on matters relating to planning policy, guidance and practice. Richard Etoff is our development management team leader and he is responsible for the work of the planning applications team. Mark Waringham is our policy team leader and responsible for drafting and interpreting planning policy. Case officer Alison Amoa is presenting one of the application reports this evening. Mustafa Khan is a planning solicitor in the council's legal department. He is here to advise me on planning and local government law. This is to ensure that when the committee makes a decision, it is both within its powers and legally signed. Simon Hill and Nikki Simpson are committee service officers taking minutes of the meeting and producing this live broadcast. With the introductions out of the way, let us now turn to the agenda. For voting on items one till seven, I will ask councillors if they are agreed. They will indicate that they are agreed through silence. If they wish to dissent, then please let me know. On the planning application items eight, nine and 10 this evening, we will go through a roll call vote and each councillor will be asked individually to vote. For the public watching this meeting this evening, Broad Street Mall, item number nine, has been moved forward before item number eight to allow the applicants to speak on that item. And I will be proposing that we suspend standing orders. Can I ask councillors that they agree to suspend standing orders to allow the applicants to speak while there is no public speaking in opposition?
Agreed.
Agreed. As before, agreed by silence. I have no dissent, so we then move to the main items on our agenda. The minutes which are on page seven of the agenda. Councillors, do I have your agreement? That is the true and accurate record of our previous meeting on the 7th of October.
Agreed.
Thank you. Declarations of interest? Do we have any councillors? Questions? We have no questions. There was a holdover question previously, which speaks to the process for local listing, which as we have a report on our agenda this evening, has been withdrawn. We will now move to agenda item four, planning appeals on page 15. And I will call Julie Williams to introduce the report, please.
Thank you, Chair. The report shows that we have had quite a significant number of appeals lodged and decided since your last meeting. And that's because we missed having planning applications committee in November. All decisions dismissed the appeals and upheld the council's decisions. There are four officer reports in your main agenda, and particularly one referring to a hearing decision for the application at Alexander Road, 205 to 207 King's Road. And this appeal was dismissed. And I should also apologise that because we had a bit of a mix up with the appeals not appearing in the November pack, because we also had three other appeals received. So we will bring you an update on those in our January meeting. But in the meantime, I have we have been able to pull together a report on the appeal decision for land adjacent to Thorpe House in Norcott Ward. And that report appears in your update pack. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Lovelock, can I ask you to address the meeting?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to the officers for pulling together the update report on Collier's Way. As you can imagine, that's the highest moments to speak to. This is very good decision and the inspector this time reinforced the comments that the previous inspector on the last appeal made. And in particular, the whole issue of the demolition of the bungalow at the end of Curtain Close, which is the only way the site could be accessed. And I just, this has now gone around in circles on several occasions, including these two appeals. I would hope the applicant might want to come and have discussions about how we could try and get this land restored to the pleasant open space it used to be. The current situation with a very unsightly fence, which is partly broken down and encouraging people to dump in there is really a really detrimental site in terms of this estate. And residents are, as you can imagine, pretty fed up with that. So I would urge the perhaps think about how we might work together on using this land for the purpose that everybody believed it was for for so many years, which is a piece of green space in a fairly built up estate. But again, thank you to the officers for the work they did on these applications. And the fact that we've won the second appeal is very good news. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Page, you've also indicated you wish to speak. Can you please address the committee?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to refer to the Alexander House decision, which is summarised on pages 22 and 23 of our papers. This was an extremely welcome decision about purpose-built student accommodation that was proposed down the King's Road instead of an extant planning permission for 56 dwellings. And it was the first test of a brand new policy included in our local plan. No local plans before in Reading have referenced the provision of student accommodation. And just so new colleagues are aware, what the policy basically said was that we were looking to the university to provide new student accommodation on university land, unless there were really exceptional circumstances. And that we regarded the provision of student accommodation on sites such as this as potentially removing, and had this been granted consent, actually removing affordable housing and other general housing, which is much in need in Reading. The arguments put forward by the appellant for justifying this purpose-built student accommodation was not only tested by the inspector at the hearing, but demolished in considerable detail in what by inspector standards is a very lengthy eight-page, sorry, seven-page appeal decision. And it is worthy of reading particularly by any other applicants who might have it in mind to bring forward a similar application in Reading. Because the bogus arguments, and whilst the inspector didn't use the word bogus, I am, were shown as threadbare, trying to link the provision of this accommodation, for example, as taking pressure off residential areas and terraced houses, when there's absolutely no proof that rental values or rentals would be at anything like the level to make that sort of attraction attractive move. There's no linkage with the university of Reading either. It was a speculative proposal. And there are a host of other issues that are addressed in full by the inspector. So for a brand new policy that is only a year old, to have been tested in such depth and upheld is an extremely welcome decision for this council and will hopefully act to focus any other land and property and developers who might have similar aspirations in mind. So Chair, an excellent decision. I thank officers for the work that they put in to this. And hopefully it will result in those sites in Reading off the university campus being brought forward for mixed family and affordable housing rather than student accommodation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Page. Would any other councillor wish to speak to this item? And as I have no indication, I will make my own comments. I'd like to echo also what councillor Page particularly raised. And there is, to my mind, something which should be read into the record from the decision note, which is explicit. In paragraph 17 of the inspector's decision note, "To my mind, the appealing site represents an example of the situation the council are seeking to avoid in the local plan, whereby development for student accommodation would prevent a potential housing site being used to help meet the need for general housing, including affordable housing." It's an explicit endorsement of our current local plan, which went through extensive consultation, including from the planning inspectorate. And I'm very happy and pleased to see that is defended so vigorously. I'd also like to put my thanks on the record for the officers with another clean sweep of how well they are defending our development plans in Reading. Thank you. Julie, do you wish to add anything else to this item?
No, no. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. We will then move on to agenda item five, prior approvals.
Thank you, Chair. This one's for me. This is the report that provides an update on the effect of on fee income and affordable housing implications. Provides a simple table, number table for applications for prior approvals received and dealt with since your last meeting. You're asked to note the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillors, do you wish to make any comments?
Noted.
Thank you. Then I will propose that we note the report and move forward. Thank you. That is agreed. We now turn to agenda item six, which is street naming. And on page 39 of our packs, and I will call Julie Williams to introduce the report.
This is me again, I'm afraid, Chair. So the street names proposals list contains names previously approved by committee that can be offered to be assigned to new developments. And there have also been five new suggestions for street names. And these are now proposed to be added to your list. And you're asked to agree these additions, please, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I've had an indication from councillor Lovelock. Do you wish to speak to this item?
Oh, hang on. Sorry, I think that my request to speak was for the item on Collier's Way rather than on this item. Sorry, I hadn't seen. So, I mean, I'm delighted to see Jim Hanley on the list and it's, I can't believe it's 10 years since he sadly passed away very suddenly. And if we are to have anything named after him, it should be in this area of Whitelands, which he spent so much time working on. Thank you.
Here, here.
I will also happily endorse the comments from my predecessors at Whitelands. Councillors, do you have any further comments to make on this report? Then we will move to agenda item seven on our report after we note this one. Our councillors agreed? Agreed. Then we move to the process for local listing of buildings and structures. Agenda item seven, which is on page 47 of your reports. And I will call Mark Waringham to introduce the report.
Thank you, Chair. This report deals with the process for local listing of buildings and structures. As you'll be aware, the council currently maintains a list of buildings and structures of local historic significance to complement the national list. And there are currently 15 buildings on that list. The decision to add a building to the list is currently taken at head of service level in consultation with the Lead Councillor for Strategic Environment Planning and Transport. The council is undertaken to review the local listing process, particularly with a view to greater transparency and accountability in the process. The report you have in front of you tonight sets out a number of options for how the process could be taken forward and asks for you to decide which of these options should in principle form how we deal with this from here on in. Subject to your decision tonight, the option will need to be worked up in more detail and brought back to a future committee meeting for final agreement, which we anticipate will be in February 2021. The report presents four options. Option one is to set up a specific subcommittee for local listing. This could comprise two lead councillors covering heritage and strategic planning leads, two officers including the Conservation and Urban Design Officer, and two community representatives with a suggestion that these be nominated by the Conservation Area Advisory Committee. The authority to make decisions on local listing would be delegated to this subcommittee after a consultation with the landowner, ward councillors and relevant community organisations. Decisions would be reported to Planning Applications Committee for information once they're made. Option two is the recommended option. This is the Planning Applications Committee directly decides on each nomination. After a consultation with the landowner, ward councillors, the Conservation Area Advisory Committee and relevant community organisations for the area, the Conservation and Urban Design Officer would provide a report to committee as and when required. Option three is a combination of the above in that the subcommittee would consider the nomination and then make a recommendation to Planning Applications Committee for decision. And option four is to continue with the existing delegation to head of service in consultation with the Lead Councillor. The report discusses the implications of these options in more detail. It also includes more detail on how the process for options one or two might work in the appendices. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I will call councillor Page to speak to the item first. Please address the committee.
Chair, thank you for that. Thank Mark for his introductory comments. The importance of local listing is set out in the report with the quote from the Historic England website. And it is also, it's my apologies, Chair. My apologies, Chair. The importance of local listing is set out in the report. We have largely had, as is pointed out in paragraph 4.2, a reactive approach to this. And I'm grateful to councillor Williams for having drawn the attention of the committee to the need to review this after a number of years. And of course, we have recently taken the very welcome decision to appoint a conservation area, a conservation and urban design officer. I took the initiative a few, couple of years ago to promote the CAC and we established the Conservation Area Advisory Committee as well. And we now have more resources at our disposal to be more proactive. And I would hope therefore that the committee would recognise that it is appropriate to enhance the status of this decision-making and also make it more transparent by bringing it to full committee. And I would strongly support option two as the cleanest and most transparent way of doing that. It's a conventional, it will be an officer process initially, as is set out in paragraph 4.7, with consultations with ward councillors, with the CAC and other interest groups. And then a report would be brought to full planning committee with a recommendation for us to discuss. And that is a process that I think would be and should be welcomed by the whole committee. I think the option one is cumbersome. It consumes more time. It isn't really transparent. Effectively, what it does is enhances the decision-making of councillors from one to two and a few more officers. And if we're going to make the change and if we're going to deliver greater transparency, it should be brought to full committee. The status quo, I don't think, is an option. And neither is option three really for that reason. We responded last year to Historic England's visit and their recommendations, part of which was, one of which was to appoint a Conservation and Urban Design Officer. And I would hope that the recommendation this evening will secure unanimous support. Having said that, Chair, I really don't understand why we can't pass an additional recommendation along those lines that we delegate the appropriate decisions to. I'm not too sure why we need to have this brought back. If we agree option two, we can agree the appropriate changes in the council's constitutional standing orders to do that. So I'd welcome clarification as to why we need this brought back yet again when the clear recommendation, if it's agreed by the committee, which I hope will be, will be to take forward option two. And option two, as described in paragraph 4.7, seems quite clear to be taken forward. So that would be my additional proposal, Chair, that we agree recommendation 2.1 and the necessary delegation to officers to take it forward with the appropriate amendment to the council's constitution and standing orders. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Page. I'll ask officers to speak to your proposal in the moment, but I'll allow other councillors first to have their comments. And then we will see if we do have unanimity on option two. I'm going to call first councillor Rowland, then councillor Josh Williams and then councillor Ricky Devine. Councillor Rowland, please address the committee.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, councillor Page said a lot of what I would say, but I would also, I would also like to point out that I'm very, very pleased with this because it begins to show that we're kind of turning the page on heritage. And as the Lead Councillor for Heritage, I'm very, very happy with that. We are really starting to turn that page. We've got our Conservation and Urban Design Officer in place. And we're starting to build up that resource within our, within our own capacity to be more proactive and to have a local list that instead of just 15 on there, a number of which are no longer with us. And as, as the report noted, has been a reactive list. It's now going to be more of a proactive list because I know that there's a lot of people out in Reading that, that think that there's a number of buildings that are quite important and would like to see on that list. It doesn't give it national significance, but it does require that once something's on a local list, that it be given material consideration in the event a planning application does come forward on the site or that impacts the site. So I'm really delighted with it. It's been a great push with Historic England, also with the Civic Voice, which is the national organisation for civic societies that have been pushing this over the last year or two for towns and councils to up their local list game and to make sure that proper accordance is given to buildings that mean something within communities. And so I think this will provide better clarity. It will also provide more transparency and allow the community to really be part of that process. And the PAC confirming that decision will be a much more transparent process. So I'm really delighted that we're, that we're here with the national trend and we're moving forward with this. And, and I would also agree with option two on that. And we'll follow along with councillor Page's query too about perhaps passing this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rowland. I'll call councillor Josh Williams.
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you to both lead councillors. As so often happens, I'm in complete support of both of them. And I'm glad I raised it last year and I'm glad they've responded so positively. The process does need to be open, community-based, and I think the decisions need to be brought to pack. So all of that is great. Option two does all those things. I'm happy to support councillor Page's desire to agree this now and not bring it back. But I wonder if I could just raise a couple of questions if officers could comment. And then perhaps I would be happy to vote for option two. My first is, I think the expertise and input of the CAC would be invaluable in this process. But, and I think option two notes that the new Conservation and Urban Design Officer would work in consultation with the CAC on these. But I also note the report says that the vast majority of local listing applications that are on the table at the moment have come from the CAC. So I just wonder if we might just hear, what I don't want is the CAC then using their expertise to assess their own applications. Because I feel like we'd be just going in a circle and potentially wasting their time. So I just wonder what officers think about that. If, if in fact most applications do come from them, how will that work? My second thing is that the reactive nature of the list to date is something that we're now updating. But is it something that we also need to keep? So if a building is directly under threat, a planning application is in, PAC isn't meeting for whatever reason over the summer, or we just had a missed meeting because there wasn't enough agenda items on there, is it necessary that the process has a way of making a decision that PAC then considers at a later date? Or is it the case that it will, that local listing decisions will always be prior to any planning application? any planning application decisions? I guess would be my question. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. This would be a convenient time to ask councillors, sorry, officers if they wish to speak to the questions that being raised or reserve to speak at the end and collect them. Mark or Julie, what would be your preference?
I'd prefer to come back to them all at the end, if that's okay please.
Perfectly agreed. Thank you. Councillor Devine, I'll call you now.
Thank you Chair, and I've got another question. There is no mention of public speaking at the PAC when it considers such a request from the CAC. Is this deliberate? I'm just wanted to make sure because I'm not unhappy the idea we don't have public speaking on an item like this, which has already been discussed locally. But I just wanted to make sure that it is, and it should be recorded somewhere, whether we allow or don't allow public speaking on an item like this.
Okay, so I will say my view as the Chair, it would be a deliberate view from myself to allow for an efficient management of a meeting. But as the Chair, I would have the capacity to suspend standing orders where necessary with full agreement of the committee, as we have done at the start of this. But by principle, there would not be any public speaking because it's quite a detailed, process driven and rather written judgment. There'll be a full report going forward, which should be sufficiently detailed and councillors will have appropriate ability to ask questions. And I'm sure, as always, will be lobbied extensively. Thank you. I'll now call the officers to comment on the questions currently raised. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. So working through in order then councillor Page's view on whether this, this would need to come back to committee. I mean, from, from an officer point of view, if, if the decision of the committee is fairly clear, I think that's, there might, might well not be any need to bring it back. It might be something we might need to quickly double check with, with the relevant people and if necessary, we can bring it back. But yeah, I have no problem with working for the basis that it, a clear decision from you now can simply be worked up by officers with a, with a relevant change to the recommendation to the decision. In terms of the input of CAC, the list that's already been put forward have come from the CAC. I'm not sure on the degree to which they are nominations by the CAC or they're nominations which the CAC have sought from their members, but haven't themselves, haven't come together and given a, a view of the committee. I suspect it's, I suspect it's the latter. I suspect that they're nominations that have come forward by individual members of the CAC. And therefore, if the CAC was able to give a, a committee view, then that would be helpful. And I think it's just worth bearing in mind that on that, under the option two, that there would be a, there would be a consultee, but obviously we'd, we'd need to, to weigh their consultation response in terms of, in terms of the degree to which it's come from them in the first place. But a lot, there's, you know, we're putting a process in place and there's an awful lot of things that could come from, from anywhere else, from, from members, from members of the public, from, from officers. So I think we need to work from the basis that, that CAC input will be really helpful, unless there's a reason that's not the case. In terms of the speed of decision making, if something comes up. This was, I suppose this is one of the reasons why option two is, is better than option one, because option one was, was a quarterly meeting and PAC meets, meets more regularly. Something could certainly be written in in terms of an emergency provision. Obviously at the moment, the, the delegation to head of service with lead councillor is, is potentially more responsive. So we could have a, an option to, to use those, that kind of emergency local listing response in an exceptional circumstance. It's something we can, we can take away and try and work up in a bit, in a bit more detail. But I think usually a monthly PAC, given that we've also got a four week consultation process in there, usually a monthly PAC ought to be sufficient. And in terms of public speaking, there's no, yeah, there's no proposal that there'd be public speaking within the report. So that wasn't, that wasn't the intention.
Okay. Thank you Mark. And now I'll move to a couple of points. It would also be my view not to proceed with public speaking as a right. It would also be for practical reasons, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be particularly welcoming of an emergency procedure purely on practical grounds because this item, if there was to be locally listing, would come in the first part of our agenda. So would be before any planning application could be decided anyway. So I wouldn't see the need to circumvent a new process. It may be in practice that a local listing decision and a planning application are decided on the same evening, potentially, but it would allow for more transparent decision making, in my view. So councillors, do we have any further comments to make? Then as I believe we have a proposal from councillor Page, that I'm happy to endorse as a seconder, I suggest we move to the vote to go to option two proposal, where we will formally make the decision now in principle that officers will work up. What I would suggest purely for practical reasons is that a report would come to a future meeting for noting, which would then also have a go live date, so that could be publicly communicated, but we wouldn't be talking about the principle. But councillors be agreed to that approach.
Yep. I just say, presumably we are also agreeing that a minute, a suitable minute be drafted that gives the delegation to officers to take this forward with the appropriate changes to the council's constitution, standing orders, so that we get that. And only if it has to come back for any other decisions, that, that obviously it has to come back. But other than that, I think your proposal is sensible that we have a, an information item back when we're ready to go live.
Yes councillor Page, the idea would be that we are clear as councillors on our objectives. That I believe officers are sufficiently clear because they've brought forward quite a cogent report, which explores a lot of the detail. That it will be that our decision this evening will be not to suggest an option to bring forward, but to agree the option, which will then come forward as an, as an information report. Councillors, are we agreed to proceed on that basis?
Agreed.
Thank you. We'll take it as unanimous. I will then ask officers, as we've made that decision, do you require any further clarification from committee?
No, thank you Chair.
Thank you. Then we will move forward in our agenda to the planning applications that we will be deciding this evening. We will take, as I've previously indicated, agenda item nine, which is Broad Street Mall, first in our agenda because this will have the applicant speaking, as we have suspended our standing orders to allow them to do so. This is to allow them to provide additional detail on one of the conditions that we've brought forward. Thank you. I will now call case officer to address the committee.
Thank you Chair.
Julie Williams.
So members result to grant planning permission for this development, subject to section 106 agreement being completed when you last met on 4th of March 2020 in the council chamber. The full report and the update report are appended to your main agenda pack. Also at that meeting, there was a lot of discussion on the outlook for residents in the new towers, with councillors asking that the proposed landscape treatment for the car park deck be brought back to this committee for further discussion and agreement. It has also been noted that the description of the development should be amended to make clear that the site C is 18 storeys high when measured from the ground level to distinguish it from the other sites which start their story heights from the car park deck level. So the purpose of this report is to explain why the description of the development needs to change and also to seek approval of the concept for greening the car park deck proposal and an appropriately worded condition. The, the condition I'm suggesting to you is in the recommendation box of your main report. And that's seeking approval of a landscaping condition, seeking the details, plant structures, installation and planting details and maintenance schedules for the landscaping of the car park deck shall be submitted for the written approval of the local planning authority before any works commence on the car park deck. The landscaping shall then take place in accordance with the approved details, no later than during the first planting season, following the date when the development hereby permitted is ready for occupation or in accordance with a timetable agreed by the local planning authority. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. I will now call upon the applicants. And we have Paul Turner from Corstefen Wright and Gary Lewis from Morgarth. Could you please address the committee? And if you could introduce yourself formally for the record. And although we have suspended standing orders, I will ask you to keep your opening comments to five minutes please. Thank you.
They'll need to press star six to unmute Chair.
Thank you. If you could both press star six.
Hello, can you hear me?
You can indeed.
Oh, good, it's Gary Lewis here from Morgarth. I, I'm not quite sure what you need me to say, other than I think we put forward some proposals to illustrate what could be done on the car park deck. I don't think it's meant to be a definitive, but it's meant to show a sort of idea of how we could, how we could go about doing some greening, which is what, what you've requested from us. We've also provided a second sketch this afternoon, which shows some alternatives, which are, I don't know if Julie, you can show that, but these images that are on the screen at the moment show plants growing over, over pergolas. What we've also talked about is the idea of potentially adding just wooden pergolas, which would cover more car parking spaces because they are less costly to produce than the, the planted versions. But again, the whole, the whole idea was really to just show some concepts of what could be done, not necessarily what has to be done. So I, I hope that goes some way to explaining what you've seen before you and, and gives you the, the comfort that actually this is, this is us trying to work with you to get the condition agreed so that we can, we can resolve this.
Gary, do you want me to just speak on the, on the constraints that we have as well as the back?
Yeah, please do.
So this is Paul Turner from Castorf in Arctech. So, so just to, to clarify really, with regards to the structures, we did look at putting things like trees on etcetera and, and alike, but the, the issues we have are that when you, when you put a tree on, it actually needs to take out four car parking spaces every time we put a tree down. And part of the reason for that is it has to sit on top of a column head. So we can't just randomly put them in across the car park because of the weight of them. So the structures that we've got here effectively are, are looking at sort of planting zones within one of the car park, relatively light planting zones as opposed to trees, which have growing foliage that grows up and over the pergolas. And as Gary said, the, the positioning on them was really for, for feedback and commentary in terms of the, the sort of the look and the, and the feel of that, the, the large space. The issues that we have to cover the large space, obviously it isn't within our budgetary constraints. And, and also just adding to that, the white blocks that you see on these images also have plants on them, which serve as the lower levels of the, of the shopping centre. And it's, it's very difficult, we couldn't actually green on top of those again because of the structural constraints of it. So we generally are trying to, to deliver as much greening within the car park as is possible. And clearly these views are forced views, effectively looking down onto the car park rather than sat in your apartments looking across because generally you'll see roof scape. So I just wanted to just fill in a little bit more detail in terms of what we can and we can't do from a constraints perspective.
Thank you. I have indications from councillor Page and councillor Roland that they wish to ask some questions. I will call councillor Page first.
Yes, I, I think part of the problem and why the concern I've registered is that we haven't really got a before and after, we haven't got, we haven't got the earlier proposals. This still, even without that, this is still what I would regard as a fairly minimalist and still leaves the majority of the car park bare and exposed. So my first question is why can't the treatment that you have proposed in the middle sections of the car park be applied down what is now the left hand side of the car park where you have that long row? And why a similar treatment couldn't be proposed on the far right hand side as well? And because you're proposing lightweight pergola type approach? And I don't see why that can't be replicated. And likewise with the, the units, the white units there, why it would not be possible to have a pergola over that or alongside at least? So those are questions, those are my questions at this stage Chair.
Thank you. I'll then ask you, yes please.
Would you like me to respond to that before we deal with councillor Roland's?
That would be the preference.
Yeah. We did send an additional drawing in this afternoon. I don't know if it's possible for you to see that, but we, as an alternative, we showed a scheme which has, instead of plants growing over it, it's just wooden pergolas that hides more car parking. I don't know if it's possible for you to show that to, to the committee, but that's an alternative which does cover more car parking spaces because it's less costly than putting in the ones that grow planting over the top. So you can get a wider coverage by doing an alternative strategy. If you, if you can't show the other image, if you look at the wooden pergolas on top of block E, which is the, the block fronting Oxford Road, they're similar in design to those. And so if we went for that sort of an option, you would actually get more coverage of the car park, which I think would help deal with the, the point councillor Page makes. And similarly, we might be able to do something lightweight on top of those white boxes in a similar vein of just a, a bit of screening or potentially a very light wooden pergola. But obviously we've got to let the plant on top of that. It's got to have air circulation obviously because the plant needs, needs, needs air circulation, you can't cover it over, see what I mean? But there's the potential to have something lightweight to screen. But there's the potential to have something lightweight to screen some of it. So that could be that could be one option.
Chair, we're obviously having some technical difficulties and of course, if we were back in the council chamber, one could have things circulated. I'm I'm minded to suggest that it would be helpful to have a. I appreciate that that Gary Lewis and so I can't remember the other gentleman's name, haven't had. Much of a guidance or opportunities to talk to us. So I minded to suggest that rather than taking time up. This evening with ifs and maybes, we might want to defer this for a discussion between ourselves. And the applicant and planning officers to take this forward. Because I'm I'm certainly not happy with the with what is shown in that slide. I've I'm unable to see other options and I think it's only fair to the applicant. That they be afforded the opportunity to have a more structured face to face discussion with us, but that I don't want to. Prevent councillor Roland from asking her question, but I I see that as a potential way forward on this, Chair.
That would seem perfectly reasonable, but I would first call councillor Roland. Please ask your questions.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, gentlemen, for coming along this evening. I'm I'm inclined to agree with councillor Page that there might be a better opportunity. To to engage and I realize the frustration of these two gentlemen that that are unable to get this. Up in front of us and they're trying to trying to describe it to us, which is which is a little bit unfortunate, but. I I wanted to ask two questions because. One of the two of you mentioned something about budget. As in this was kind of within the budget and I wanted to get an idea of that. Also, I've I've understood and and you explained about the trees having, if you were going to do trees. They would have to sit on columns that would take out four spots, that that kind of thing. And I. I'd also heard that providing any more pergola space might also reduce car. Space too. So I wanted some kind of feedback on that because. To me, we are missing a real opportunity here. You're you're looking at a council who is rapidly progressing into the modern age. A couple of weeks ago. We finalized our climate emergency strategy and so biodiversity, green. Especially in the town centre are so critical to us and our our minds are being open to that every day and. I I'm less, I I understand the idea about a wood pergola kind of hiding the car park, but I look at this more of an opportunity for green. Not an opportunity to display asphalt, which is going to do no one any favors or or tarmac or whatever. But but green as an opportunity to reduce heat loss to. To to be a real energy saver and to increase biodiversity in in the town centre area. So. If you could address me maybe about the budget and and car loss. In other words, could you give us more green if we? We lost five more cars, car spots, that kind of thing. Is there a quid pro quo that we could compare that to? I've never I've never really heard that offered. And while I understand we own the car park. Spaces and everything. I for one might sit down there and say, okay, I'll I'll lose four spots if I get X more green, because it's that kind of nature for us. So. I'm sorry, those aren't particular questions, but but a few ideas if you could maybe come back on. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. The budget and the green and trees are all related in that. If you if you go with the pergolas, as you've seen on those drawings. You lose at least one car parking space, probably two, to put. For want of a better description, soil down to grow the plants from. So there is an immediate loss of car parking spaces. If you went for the more simple pergola version. The the loss of car parking is is reduced because you're you're just putting posts at the end of parking base. Ah. I've just seen an image come up on the screen which. Shows the wooden pergola version or a version with wooden pergolas. So it it the budget thing is that it costs an arm and a leg to build those green. Screens that we've put on there and. If we could. If we weren't providing plants, it would be a cheap, we could provide a cheaper solution, which would be the timber structure only. So you could get more for your money. The 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 thing about the trees is, as Paul said, you have to put them in strategic positions that they have to go on where the loading is. You can't just put them wherever you like. But you could and you do lose four car parking spaces. So if you choose as a council to. Lose more car parking spaces, that's that's a potential option. But again, it all comes down to how many trees can you afford to pay for? Over and above a pergola, if you like. So I think. That the the offer of a meeting to discuss this in more detail is a welcome one from my point of view because it enables us to talk about this. And look at stuff rather than trying to visualize it in our heads. I mean, we're we're not opposed to the idea. We're just trying to come up with a solution that works, that we can afford to do. That helps helps you get what you want, but doesn't cripple. The 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 cost of the scheme, if you see what I mean. Does that help? Probably not.
Thank you very much. I think that 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 helps tremendously. Yeah, I don't, it it's not a personal thing. It's not what. What we need or whatever. It's it's a climate emergency.
Yeah.
So that that's, yeah.
Yeah. Chair, could I propose we defer this for a meeting before councillor Roland rushes away and gives away loads of my parking spaces? And but seriously, I think I think it would be helpful to to have a. A meeting with relevant planning officers there and the applicant so we can. I'm grateful for this additional. Plan that that's been shown and clearly there are a number of options and rather than detain ourselves this evening on. On speculation, I I think it would be helpful if we. Deferred this for a further meeting and then brought something back when we've got. Hopefully, a more consensus, a greater consensus and some proposals to sign off on. So I would I would propose that, Chair, if that's agreeable.
Councillor Page, I hear your request. I'll just say it's slightly in the wrong place because I need to open up. For debate first and then you can make a proposal.
Chair, nobody's indicated to speak, which is why I was leaping in.
As yet, we'll get to that because obviously we'll call our officers to speak should they have a comment. Julie Williams, you've indicated you wish to speak.
Yes, please, Chair. Well, I wasn't sure whether any other councillors wanted to speak on this. If no others councillors do, then I'm happy to join in at this stage. I think it's worth saying that we are making very good progress on negotiating the terms for the section one or six agreement and. Part of that section one or six agreement should be a draft. Planning decision notice. So we we share the planning conditions at that stage to be annexed to the legal agreement. So. I was really hoping that we could at least make progress on the wording. For the relevant landscaping edition for the car park deck. And so the the wording that's in the. Agenda is doesn't prescribe what that landscaping should be. It it simply says it it it's a bespoke condition to address the landscaping on the car park deck. But it does leave it open for us to have carry on having our discussions with the applicants. About what those details shall be, what the structure shall be, etcetera. Also bearing in mind that. The timescale for installing this landscaping will come. After the tower blocks have been built. So when the rest of the landscaping comes, so we're talking. A couple of years hence and who knows what the situation will be for the car park management etcetera at that time. So I think really to help us to try and make progress on dealing with the application. And also make less work for for members is if we can maybe agree to. Accept the wording of that planning condition for the decision notice, but we still then have. Discussions, meetings with all councillors, I would suggest, and the applicant to agree the detail of what. What will come forward as part of the landscaping for the site. I just want to suggest that to you. Thank you.
I don't have a problem with that approach, Chair, provided the minute makes it clear that that we are. That we've still got to have those discussions around the details.
Thank you. Of course, I think still have it that the detail, when we finally have the details submitted to discharge that condition. Then that could come back to committee, but as I say, that could be a couple of years on down the line.
Councillor Roland, you've indicated you wish to speak.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm technically happy with that. What I what I do not want to be understood under any set of circumstances. Is that I'm happy with the visuals that we've seen this evening. I'm I'm I I want to be very, very clear on that. And if if my agreement with that tonight. Gives any hint that that I'm happy with that and I'm not in favor.
Okay.
So, yeah.
That would be my view as well, but we I don't think we are agreeing to those visuals. Those are examples, I think. Sorry to butt in, Chair.
For you, Chair, can I just ask Julie, the wording in the condition. Which says. The details shall be submitted for the written approval of the local planning authority. That usually means officers. It doesn't mean back to committee. Is that correct? But we could amend that to say that it needed to come to committee?
Yeah, the the standard for our planning conditions is that we don't refer to how we make the decision in the actual planning condition. What we tend to do is minutes. You have it minuted that the decision is brought back to committee.
Yep.
So what we're saying is add as informative onto the decision notice to. Make the applicant aware because it could well be a different developer who could be implementing this, who knows? That they are aware that the details of that condition need to come back to committee.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. So. I've heard the request before. I would open this up to the main debate for councillors and let the applicants off the phone. I would ask a question of Julie, how close are we to signing the agreement? Because we have a meeting on the thirteenth of January and the third of February, both of which are before the extension date on this permission. And it should be possible to arrange a meeting to get sufficient clarity. Ahead of one of those two meetings.
We set the extension eleven of February at our last meeting with the applicants because that seemed to be a reasonable timeframe to get this. This conditions sorted or the other conditions are more or less drafted as we would like them to be. And the legal agreement, I think, is in quite, it's it's almost ready to be completed. We've been having discussions on public realm payments and things like that. So. I think we are almost there, ready to go. But, you know, I wouldn't like to be held to a date on a section sixteen completed, especially with the Christmas in between. So. I think it may be unlikely to be done by January committee, but we we it could well be done by by the, you know, we are hoping it is completed by the eleventh of February. So what's your suggestion? Like we bring back the. If we have any more progress on those meetings to. An appropriate meeting if we have the chance.
That would be more my suggestion if we could. Move forward for the formal deferral of this condition until there is some additional detail. And the meeting facilitated between officers to have some additional clarity on what we are conditioning.
Yeah, okay.
Because it is a very, very broad condition. Which could affect the materiality both for councillors and their decision and for the applicants themselves.
Okay.
Okay. So what I would suggest doing is that if we move to a deferral. We would intend to bring it forward for the thirteenth of January. If we could arrange a meeting in time.
Yeah.
If not, it would then follow forward to the third of February. At which time there should definitely have been enough time to come forward and we would make a formal decision by the third, which would be within the timeframe. And should allow the agreement to be signed.
Okay.
Be a reasonable course of action.
It's it's doable. Yes, yes, it's, yeah. If that's what if that's what you like to do, that's fine.
And then as our applicants still happen to be on the phone. Would that be a reasonable course of action for yourselves? Would you be able to have a meeting within that timeframe?
Yeah, we can meet, we can meet as soon as next week if if that suits the relevant parties at your end.
Ground. We will fix the formal meeting time. The next committee dates would be the thirteenth of January and the third of February. I would hope that we would have. Sufficient detail to make a formal decision at one of them to endorse it. Councillors, before we move to the opening the debate where we can make a proposal to defer, I will ask if you have any further questions of the applicants. Are there agents? I have no indication, so now I will formally open the debate. Councillors, do you have any comments to make? Excellent. So then we have a proposal from councillor Page to defer. To, in the first instance, the thirteenth of January, awaiting a meeting with. Interested members of the planning committee. And ward councillors, we will leave it as a open condition. With the intention that we would bring forward some additional detail. Not the full detail of the condition, but have some closer agreement on the principles involved for the landscaping scheme. To the thirteenth of January. Councillors, would you be agreed with that course of action? Thank you. On this one, we will have to formally raise the vote and I'll need to ask your names because there's a planning application. So if we are content to move forward, we will then. I will call you in alphabetical order. Starting with councillor Devine, would you be content to vote for the deferral as I've outlined it?
Yes, content with the deferral. Happy to go along with that.
Thank you. Councillor Lovelock, for against or abstain on the deferral?
I'm for the deferral. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor McGinn?
I'm for the deferral, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Page?
Yes, agreed.
Councillor Robinson?
For the deferral.
Councillor Roland?
For the deferral.
Councillor Sukala?
For the deferral.
Councillor Stamford-Bale?
For the referral.
Councillor Josh Williams?
Yes, for. Thank you, Chair.
And for myself, I will also vote for the deferral. On a separate item, we will note the change to the description, which is purely for clarity. And not requiring a formal vote.
Thank you.
We will now move to, I will thank the applicants and the reagents for being here. It was most helpful to our decision making. And we will arrange a meeting. Preferably earlier to at least give some clarity to allow you a clear steer to work up some proposals to bring forward to a future meeting. But I will thank you and say that you're now excused from our meeting. Thank you both. We move to agenda item eight. Which is two zero one four two zero for application on forty five Cavisham Road. And we have Richard E. Tough as our officer to introduce this application, which is on page sixty five of our agenda packs. Richard, please address the committee.
Thank you, Chair. The application site is on the Cavisham Road IDR at its junction with Great Nolly Street. The site has for many years been in motor related uses. The site forms part of a wider allocation site for regeneration of the area for a mix of uses, including commercial and residential, but during pre-application discussions. And with the applicant's justification, it has been accepted that the site is preferable to be developed for residential only and to remove motor related uses. As these are not felt to have been complementary to residential. So the proposal is for a high density modern block and provides a mix of unit sizes on site, including affordable housing. Officers have been in pre-application discussions on this site before the application was submitted, including reviewed by the council's design review panel. The proposal before you is. The proposal before you is a product of the pre-application process and is for a four to five storey development of 40 flats in a contemporary style. The design includes a curved edge towards the junction, which is considered to be a sympathetic design solution. The upper story is set back to reduce the dominance of the bulk of the building and the building drops to three stories where it meets the adjoining terrace on Cavisham Road. Detail will, design details will need to be carefully handled on the finishing materials, but the design uses a series of bays to break up the long massing of the block on Great Nolly Street. And it features a strong parapet wall at the top, brick and tall windows. These elements echo the heritage buildings nearby, for example, the Regent Place listed building in the foreground of the image you can see there. Landscaping on this development is going to need to work hard to soften the development and it's considered that on this valuable Brownfield site, the correct balance has been struck between achieving a strong purpose of the site and provision of suitable landscaping. The block includes an undercrofted area providing access to a limited number of parking spaces, cycle spaces and bin storage. Amenity space within this development is limited and reflects the highly accessible nature of the location. Most flats do have a balcony and there is a limited area of communal amenity space at the rear. But acknowledging that this is compromised, there is also a contribution towards open spaces. The affordable housing provision would be 12 units on site, although in this instance, the developer is indicating that the proposal in all likelihood will comprise 100% affordable units in a range of tenure types. The update report mainly deals with the discussion regarding the rental levels. Officers are satisfied that the level proposed is appropriate and no undesirable precedent would be set, given the policy and SPD position at this point in time and the housing authority are also satisfied with the levels agreed with the developer. The section 106 agreement, heads of terms, also includes inter alia obligations to ensure that carbon offsetting is achieved and the employment and skills measures are undertaken during the construction phase. The update report also deals with parking spaces and bin storage details and their minor adjustments to conditions. Not in the update report, there are a couple of other points to advise the committee of. The response to the Environment Agency is received basically to say this should be seen against their standing advice and they are not to be consulted. The measures within standing advice were already set out within the main report. There's no further response from the access officer, although the update report does cover a condition to maintain disabled access via lifts. I think there are three lifts and three cores within the development. On the basis of the reports before you, this is, in summary, considered to be a suitable and sustainable redevelopment of the site and subject to the completion of the section 106 agreement and conditions as listed, you are asked to grant planning permission. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. I will call councillor Rowland to speak first, followed by councillor Page. Councillor Rowland, please address the committee.
Thank you Chair, and I would like to thank officers for their work on this and to note that it is a greatly improved site and presentation from when we first saw this a while back, I believe. And much more in keeping with the listed buildings, which lie directly to its north and then at some distance to its south. I'm very pleased with it. Abbey Ward councillors are very pleased with it, because it's been a site of of probably not the most visual ecstasy as one walks by on Cavisham Road. And this is obviously clearly a welcome improvement to that, so we're quite pleased with that. I do think in relation to the listed buildings, that it's a reasonable site. It pays attention to the materials of the area, it pays attention to the size and scale and that is appropriate, so it's not going to unduly stick out or detract from the enjoyment of the settings of the listed buildings to either side there. What I would ask though, in noting the listed buildings in the area there, is that the materials would be actually something that could be subject to a further condition or approval with our new conservation urban design officer, our kudo, along with Abbey Ward councillors and whilst I will heartily endorse this application, I would ask respectfully for that condition so that we can ensure, because there's some very special looking brick right there in the area and that doesn't actually have to be paid attention to, so that's my request and thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Rowland. I'll now call councillor Page to address the committee.
Briefly, I support the comments that councillor Rowland has just made. I think it's important that the appropriate materials and brick are signed off. The colouring that's shown on page 69, I think is a bit misleading, because it shows a much brighter red brick than I think is what's intended, but we do need to ensure that there is a relativity to the existing listed buildings opposite and alongside. It's worth reminding colleagues that this site has long been an unattractive, almost eyesore on the corner of Great Nolly Street and Cavisham Road. It was tidied up relatively when the car hire business was established there nearly 30 years ago. And before that, it was even worse, so this represents a major improvement in terms of the usage of the site. And the design, I think, is an improvement on those that were initially trialled during the pre-app discussions last year. I welcome the fact that this is policy compliant in terms of our affordable housing policy and obviously, if there's any chance of a housing association, or indeed even the council acquiring the whole site for social housing, then that's even better. But it's a welcome development with what is proposed as a minimum in terms of the affordable housing and I hope it will secure the support from the committee. Oh, lastly Chair, I'm happy with the amendments that are proposed in terms of the update report relating to the bin arrangements. Thank you Chair.
Councillor McKenna, you appear to be in.
Are you on mute?
Apologies, I'll sing back. Would any further councillors wish to speak to this item? Then I suggest we move to the vote on the application as printed with the amendment that the material, materiality condition on particularly the red brick facing would be deferred for comment with Ward councillors in consultation. Councillors, have we agreed?
With.
Agreed.
To proceed on that motion, then I will move to the vote formally and call councillor Devine first to indicate if he wishes to vote for.
For the proposal.
Against or abstain, thank you. Councillor Lovelock?
For the proposal.
Councillor McKeon? Councillor McKeon, are you in the meeting? And now I'll mute like my good self. We will.
Sorry, I logged off over there. Yes, in favour, thank you.
Thank you councillor McKeon. Councillor Page?
For.
For. Thank you councillor Page. Councillor Robinson?
For the proposal.
Thank you councillor Robinson. Councillor Rowland?
For.
Councillor Sukala?
For the proposal.
Councillor Stamford-Bale?
For.
Councillor Josh Williams?
For.
And myself will also vote for, it is therefore a unanimous decision of this committee. Thank you. We now move to agenda item 10, application 192054 full on Reading International Logistics Park, in the most interesting word in Reading, obviously my own. I will call Alison Amoa to speak to this item. Please introduce your report.
Thank you Chair, can you hear me okay?
We can indeed, thank you Alison.
The application is for four flexible warehouse distribution units on part of the site of the former Berkshire Brewery bottling plant on the A33 north of junction 11 of the M4. It's adjacent to Reading International Business Park, next to Tesco Distribution Centre and opposite the mixed use commercial and residential scheme. The applicant has advised that there's been no interest for a significant period of time in letting of office space at this site, which was the approved use of the extant permission. It was a six storey office building with surface level parking. They have therefore come forward with this current proposal and the site is allocated within the local plan for B class uses, albeit with a guide floor space of up to 13,000 square metres compared to the proposal in front of you of just over 15,000 square metres. The site is adjacent to the grade two listed Little League Cottage. It includes a tree preservation order and the Kingsley Road ditch class as the main river runs through the site. At pre-application stage, officers advised that the overall scale of proposal may be acceptable, subject to addressing matters specifically focused on ecology, trees and heritage. During the course of the application, a number of amendments and further clarification were provided, seeking to respond to a range of objections and issues raised by consultees. Such amendments led to objections being removed by the Environment Agency and the Natural Environment Officer. However, the ecology officer maintained his objection based on the view that the area of trees to be removed to the southeastern part of the site would lead to the loss of priority woodland, that the construction of a tall building adjacent to the water course would adversely affect it and that insufficient information had been submitted with respect to bats, reptiles and invertebrates to determine the likely impact on these species. The applicant has since provided further justification for their position on these matters and the update report also identifies the applicant's calculation that there would be over 17% net biodiversity increase on site, which would accord with relevant policy. This calculation is based on a DEFRA biodiversity metric and the applicant's view is that although they strongly disagree with Reading's ecologists view that the colonizing ground across the car park is lowland woodland habitat, if they were to detail that area within a metric, they consider that a net gain would still be achieved. Having reviewed this further information which came in this afternoon, Reading's ecologist still considers that it's not been demonstrated that there wouldn't be a net loss of biodiversity and maintains their position. However, officers, planning officers have weighed up both positions and have concluded that sufficient information has been provided to demonstrate that any loss of existing biodiversity would be adequately mitigated on site through the scheme and with sufficient enhancements. And these are set out in summary in paragraph 6.54 of the main report. In terms of the woodland identified by RBC's ecologists, officers consider that this is relatively recently established, which is evident from aerial photographs, which you'll see on the slide, which date from, I think, 2006 through to 2018. And that shows how the woodland or area has established. And that, from officers' view, is as a result of obviously vacancy and lack of management of a former built site. It's argued this would have comparatively less significance compared to a more well-established area and therefore its value would be lower. In terms of the adjacent listed building, although development on the application site would change how the asset would be experienced by further exacerbating the industrial and commercial setting, this has to be considered in the context of the site's previous use as part of Berkshire Brewery, the effect the extant permission would have had and the fact that there is an allocation for the redevelopment of the site. It is not considered that the application site in its current form provides any significant setting to the listed building. The retention of existing tree screening and setback of units from the boundary would limit the impact on the setting of the listed building and proposed materials would also serve to visually soften the view of the buildings. Officers consider that the public benefits of the scheme, namely provision of jobs in a deprived area, bringing a vacant and untidy site back into effective use, good quality landscaping and proposed management of such would outweigh any harm to the significance of the listed building. The proposal would meet national and local economic objectives by providing a storage and logistics site and would specifically bring jobs to South Reading, where deprivation specifically in terms of skills is high. The heads of terms that are identified in the recommendation.
Sorry Alison, we've just lost you. Are you still there or have we fallen foul of your connection? Okay. We'll work on the assumption therefore that Alison was coming to the end of her comments and will be able to rejoin the meeting in a few moments. I will open it for debate and then if there are any additional questions that Alison may have missed, we will summarise and recap. Councillors, would that be an appropriate course forward? Silence is agreement, so.
Chair.
As this, yes councillor Rowland?
Could we give a second for her or could we ask Julie Williams to make an estimate on that? She really was summing up there, I mean, I don't know whether she was quite through, but.
Yes, I can conclude. Lucky enough, we shared a script between us, so I should be able to conclude with where she had got to. I think she had just been saying about, she was saying about the economic benefits to the area in terms of the employment to come forward with the scheme. She was going to go on to say, in terms of the adjacent listed building, although development on the application site would change how the asset would be experienced by further exacerbating industrial and commercial setting, this has to be considered in the context of the site's previous use, so she's explained that to you already. The other issue was regarding green roofs. Although issues were raised regarding not including green brown roofs, these are among a number of measures which could be used and officers consider that sufficient justification has been provided by the applicant as to why these have not been included. So overall, the scheme is recommended.
Excellent.
Oh dear.
Councillor McKenna, I'm sharing the same script and before Julie went down there, she's about four lines away, I can just finish it off if you like.
Fire away.
Officers consider that sufficient justification has been provided by the applicant as to why these have not been included. That was the green and brown roofs, the point Julie was just trying to finish on there. We're just at the conclusion here. Overall, the scheme is recommended for approval, subject to a legal agreement. Conditions and informatives are set out in the main report. That's the end of our introduction on that one. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. As I was stating beforehand, we will have a sort of summing up and Richard, if you could weigh in, if you're able to keep full attendance of the meeting and then we can ask any additional questions of either Julie or Alison when they're able to rejoin us.
I'm back on the call by the way, sorry BT decided it was going to give us a problem and everything went stop.
That's.
I don't know where you got to and apologies for interrupting you. I don't know where you got to and apologies for interrupting you, councillor McKenna.
No, it's most welcome. We've just finished your script and we've yet to open the debate.
Okay.
So you've rejoined us at the perfect moment.
Okay, you see finished the speaking part?
Yes, so Julie and Richard finished your script, which is to recommend us for approval.
I hope I said what I wanted to say.
I'm quite sure. At the end, of course, you'll have the opportunity to weigh in with everything.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I lost my broadband first time ever, so must be some jinx going on.
Yeah. So then we'll move forward and as Chair and Whitely Ward councillor on here, I will speak first. And I welcome the application, which will effectively take an area of scrubland which is allocated for employment use into employment use in what is a sustainable way and a very needed now form of development, which is for warehousing, as we've seen much more go online. And the UK has an insufficient amount of warehousing space, both with the move to online and with Brexit. I'll pay tribute to the officers who have done, to my mind, quite a good job on trying to arrange for the greeting of this application site. And I'd also like to thank them for obtaining the additional reassurances that I'd asked for, which are reflected within the update pack. And as Chair, I have the option to sum up, so I will open it for other councillors. We will take the speaking in the order of councillor Sukhali, then councillor Rowland, then councillor Stamford-Bale and then councillor Devine. Councillor Sukhali, please address the committee.
Thank you Chair and officers for getting through that despite the technical issues. I'm going to apologise in advance on my soliloquy here. First, I note economic benefits in the employment bought by this industrial property. I'd like to take the opportunity to highlight the importance of the other elements of sustainable development. I agree with the concerns raised by our ecologists. The council is committed to the environment with our recent publications and strategy reflecting this. For example, the council's Tree Strategy, which aims to increase canopy cover across the town. I note the update pack and the newly calculated biodiversity net gain. I still would like to see the application conditioned carefully in the yet-to-be-submitted L4 Landscape Management and Maintenance Plan to detail the utilitarian, ecological and aesthetic objectives for the landscape that would support the natural environment being left measurably better. As the application, as it stands, states in section 4.57, makes it clear that this current proposal does have significant impact on existing trees. In addition, I'd also like to inquire about the flood risk assessment and drainage strategy. The application states the EA are happy, but there's been no comment on the LFFA feedback, so the Local Flood Authority feedback. And there are a number of drains in the area as visible from the DEFRA magic map of the site. Therefore, I'm a little wary on the lack of detail on the flood risks and suds, which are also linked to biodiversity and ecology. I think the comment I see on flood risk seems to end up being eight metres away from the ditch. I also note that the officer says they're happy with the existing site's discharge rates because it's an improvement on the existing site's discharge rate. However, nothing states how close that is to the greenfield runoff rates and why those rates can't be met. So my question in short is, what measure has been taken to reduce the discharge rates? Are the discharge rates equivalent to the greenfield? If not, what could be done to meet them as detailed in EN 18, page 62 of Reading Borough's local plan, flooding and sustainable drainage? For reference, I'm commenting on 4.79, section 6.74 and section 6.78 for the officer's information.
Thank you. And I'll say to officers, if they wish to weigh in at the end of any councillor's speaking, please indicate. Otherwise, I will assume that you'll collect questions till the end and councillors can ask for clarification should they wish it. Thank you. We'll now move to councillor Rowland. Please address the committee.
Thank you Chair and I will quickly say I am no environmental ecologist on nearly that level, but I am very passionate about it and I think that we need to understand that what we have is something here that is very, very, going to be very, very valuable, I believe, in warehouse spacing being provided and jobs for a part of town that needs that and lacks certain skill sets. So I think that is a very, very good thing. But we've also, as we were talking about earlier this evening in reference to the Broad Street Mall, we have just recently passed our climate emergency strategy. And so we are a council that is rapidly moving forward in our thought processes, very eager to achieve things in terms of the environment. And so I look at this proposal on some level and then I look at Green Park, which is just a little bit north and west of where the site is and I kind of despair. I realise a warehouse is basically a square box, so to say. But we do have a loss of some biodiversity there and then again, they're saying that there is a biodiversity gain and there's obviously some differences of opinion between our ecologist and theirs. But I don't feel like this is the forward thinking that we're trying to achieve. I feel like this is something that could have been proposed 20 or 30 years ago in that regard. And I guess a warehouse, you can only dress it up so many ways. But I did notice in section 4.3 that the, in regards to part B of policy EN 12, that we wanted to make some conditions, which I notice are in our list. So I'm very happy for that to come forward. And I do hope that as developments continue to be presented in Reading, that people are mindful that we really truly are in a climate emergency and we really, really do need to respond to that. As far as tree cover, this is in Whitely Ward and Whitely Ward is our second lowest canopy cover in the entire town and we are trying by 2030 to get up to 25% coverage. And right now, Whitely, albeit it's got a large area that cannot be planted by trees, is at 7.92. So trees really do make a difference. And I do hope that we can continue to see some innovation going forward and to take some inspiration when just looking around you at Green Park just directly north of you, which really manages to marry office use with a beautiful, wonderful ecologically biodiverse area. So that's not really, yeah, I guess that's kind of about it for me. But I do want us to be forward-thinking and I do hope that that is, that's something that we will go forward with. I will mention also, I'm sorry, apologise, Little Lee Cottage or the farmhouse just there, will have a loss, a further loss of its setting. But I think this is understandable in this case, it's regrettable. But, and you'll kind of lose a view coming north around the corner. But I would also encourage the landscaping that I do see there that will separate the lorry turnings of the warehouse area there, which is about 25 metres, I think, away from Little Lee Cottage. So it will be a lone pillar of history that people will always wonder what's there. But as a setting, it can hardly be more compromised than it already has been. So thank you Chair, sorry for rambling on there. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now call councillor Stamford-Bale, to be followed by councillor Devine and councillor Williams. Councillor Stamford-Bale, please address the committee.
I support this application. I think that we ought to look at the photographs and the description of the current use of the land. It's, the centre of the site is a former car park with asphalt on it which is being broken through by small trees and scrub. It's not doing much for our climate emergency in its current state. I think rebuilding it into a warehouse and putting in the planting that is currently proposed, it would be great if we could enhance it. But more importantly, providing jobs for people in Reading. You know, we need some good jobs for people and I think we mustn't lose sight of that. So overall, I think we need to go back and revisit the, what the ecologists are saying. And councillor Sukhali's asked some highly technical questions. But as I said, I think we need to just remember that this is warehousing and it is producing jobs in part of town that does need them. So I would urge all members to support this application. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Stamford-Bale. I will now call councillor Devine to speak to this item.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to make one or two points on sustainability. We, it talks about various points not having, not the non-viability of a ground source heat pump. It makes mention of air source heat pump, but on 6. Doesn't actually say, will actually install air source heat pumps. I wasn't quite sure what they are proposing to do, but I would think it would be remiss of us if we allowed the development to go ahead without either air source heat pump or ground source heat pump. And I think that's a bit of a shame, a shame that they haven't made a point of that. I also have questions on the ecology and the distance from a watercourse. Although I understand that actually the bit of the site that's nearest to watercourse is a part of a car park. So in theory, it shouldn't, it shouldn't matter. We are less than 10 metres, but more than eight metres from the actual watercourse. And I wondered about some of the other ecology points that people have raised as well. But on the whole, I'm more than happy to see a warehouse option being provided here. It's the right place for a warehouse, I think. And all things being equal, if only we could clarify what he means by sustainability in 666, I'd be happy with it.
Okay. I will ask officers, but would also direct councillor Devine to 667. Beforehand, we will move to councillor Josh Williams to please address the committee.
Thank you Chair. I'm happy to be directed to any sections of the report as well because I'm going to ask a couple of questions. And I've read the report and it's, I'm very grateful to the officer, but it is lengthy and I may have got slightly confused. So here are my questions. First of all, I think that the key elements running against this development were exactly as the officer stated, the ecology, the heritage and the trees. And just as councillor Stamford-Bale said, I think we're all going to welcome the economic development that comes with this. But, and Chair, I think I would accept the loss of what is probably recently developed scrub. But the thing that I can't get over is the fact that even with that loss, we need to see the improvement in biodiversity. And the applicant says that the improvement is there. But the council-employed ecologist says that there is not the evidence for that and that's the bit I can't quite understand here. And I wonder if officers could just talk a little bit more about, why is the council's own ecologist saying that that simply isn't evidenced? And why is the applicant saying that it is? Under normal circumstances, I guess I would put a question mark over the developer saying that their development will definitely bring the biodiversity gains that we want. I'd normally look towards the council's expert for some sort of tangible analysis of that. And I guess we're being told as a committee that that analysis is not there, that it will not make the net gains that we expect. So I guess that's my question Chair. And I'd quickly like to know that I did enjoy paragraph 4.14, which mentioned that the construction of the Courage Brewery and details of this event were hazy, which I enjoyed a lot. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. I'll admit to normally becoming a bit more hazy when I've sampled their products rather than their construction. Alison, would you wish to address any of the comments raised so far?
I'll have a go. Gosh, I've got a lot of paper on my table now. So I'll go back to the questions regarding suds. I'm not entirely clear. I mean, basically in terms of suds, they've put in the Drainage Flood Risk Strategy, which was reviewed by our suds officer. And although there was some discrepancy in some of the information that was presented and that's why we've still got the conditions as they would normally stand recommended, actually the overall conclusion, which is set out, I think in, hang on, I'm just flicking through, sorry. 4.79 in the consultation section is that actually the overall scheme would be acceptable because both of the figures that were presented, albeit slightly different to each other, were representing a reduced runoff rate. And therefore, that was considered to be acceptable. So there was no objection raised from a suds perspective. I'm not sure whether that has answered the question with respect to that.
Councillor Sukhali, has that answered your question?
I'd already seen section 4.79 and the discrepancy between the 62.3 litres per second via the discharge rate of 10 litres per second. But I still think that isn't, I don't think it answers the questions, but I can hopefully speak to you offline if that's a possibility. I'll ask Chair for some guidance on that one.
Okay, so often times.
Clarify if you like.
Yes please.
Thank you Chair.
Before you do, could I please ask you to introduce yourself to the meeting?
So I'm Darren Cook, the Transport Development Control Manager and suds officer. So the proposed runoff rate and discharge rate for the proposal is in line with the 1 in 100 year greenfield rate runoff. So it does reduce it to that greenfield runoff rate. However, as part of the drawings, the confusion comes because they're actually showing a betterment to that level as well on the drawings. So what we're doing is we've got that baseline that we can agree to for the greenfield runoff rate. We've just got the condition that we've included to get the full details to know exactly what that runoff rate will actually be. But you know, as a worst case, it will be the greenfield runoff rate for the 1 in 100 year event.
Thank you. Councillor Sukhali, does that help you?
That's exactly what I needed to know in terms of the greenfield runoff rate. One more question, where is the actual water discharging to? I couldn't find that detail in the drawing.
So there is a, I think it's going from memory, I haven't looked through the drawings, I've to come back through the report. The, it's into the sewer system, but there is an attenuation tank that would kind of reduce that runoff rate. So it is into the sewer system.
Handled and managed for. Thank you so much for answering my question Darren. I know very technical and very last minute sprung on you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. And I will assume that's properly conditioned, that it will be and the principles are great. Alison, would you wish to continue?
Yeah, I'll have a go. Councillor Rowland, you made reference to tree cover within and in terms of sort of being very low in that respect in this ward. There is perhaps just a sort of a summary to clarify that, which was actually in the update report, in the letter that was submitted that was for all councillors, where they refer to removing trees that are considered dead, diseased or dying and that actually there will be 146 new trees as well as hedgerow and then there'll be other, you know. And then there'll be other, you know, other planting, um, and so forth. So that there was, there was that detail in there. And, and actually in terms of the natural environment officer, they were, um, overall sort of happy with the, the scheme after all the amendments that had been made. Um, in, in terms of, uh, questions that were raised by councillor Devine and specifically sustainability and reference to air source heat pumps. Um, so there are, there are air source heat pumps included in the design of the ventilation system. So that, that is, is part of the overall sustainability, um, approach. Uh, just to clarify that point, if it wasn't clear. Um, uh, councillor Devine, you also, uh, referred to something to do with the distance from the water course. So I wasn't quite sure what your question was, uh, in that regard. Would you be able to, to, uh, reconfirm please?
Councillor Devine? Uh, councillor Devine, are you available and not on mute?
Yes, sorry Chair, my wife's just taken a tumble. I can't, I need to go back to her.
Certainly, I'll leave you to that. We'll come back. Thank you. Alison?
Okay, sorry, sorry to hear that councillor Devine. Um, so finally then, with regard to councillor Williams's questions, um, where I think the point being made is why, uh, why is our ecologist saying one thing? And the developer is saying something else, and they're sort of, you know, almost at, uh, opposite ends. I think, so the, the, the point is that, um, our ecologist has taken the view that.
Can I just, so, sorry Alison, it's, it's Mustafa here. Uh, councillor McKenna, the, because we've got one member who's just left, um, technically the whole committee, when they're making decisions, should be able, this, this is quite a lot of technical information. So I think.
Before you continue, could you please introduce yourself to the meeting formally?
Uh, my, my name is Mustafa Khan. I'm, uh, uh, the, I'm advising you from, from the legal department today.
Yes.
Uh, in place of Wendy. Um, just, uh, basically because Alison is going over, um, a technical point here, and this might affect any decision on, on, on when the vote takes place. And I understand what a member is no longer, uh, I, I sort of missed, I didn't quite catch, but I understand he, he, he's no longer sit, sitting in committee right now, is that correct?
Okay, so.
Potentially there has, yeah, I mean, I think the full committee really needs to, because this has already started. Uh, it might, uh, it might be worth asserting, um, exactly what's happening with, with the member before we, we proceed. There have been cases in the past where the courts have held that, uh, you know, the full quorum should be. So I, I, I do apologize in, in, uh, to, to interfere, but Alison is really going through fairly technical, which could potentially sway a decision. There's the, there have been judicial views.
Mustafa, I'm well aware as Chair how to proceed.
I do apologize.
And as announced at the start, where we have five members of the meeting, we will be quorum. Councillor Devine has had previous training and is an experienced member of this committee and is fully aware that if he was to miss part of this meeting, as is the case with all councillors, where they may miss information that may be material, they would then not record their vote to allow us to make a legally signed decision.
Right. Yes, that, that's sufficient. I'm, I'm satisfied, completely satisfied.
And we rely on each member to make their own judgment as to where they've been able to access all of this meeting. I believe in this case, councillor Devine would not be and would recuse himself from voting. As a Chair, I have the capacity to move forward and make a determination. But I would not do so without first speaking to the councillor who is dealing with another issue that I will not address in a public committee.
Uh, yeah.
And I proceed. Thank you. Alison, could you please continue?
Thank you. Um, so in terms of, uh, councillor Williams's questions, um, I'll just reiterate, uh, what I said a moment ago, um, that, that there is a, a query why, uh, where our ecologist is, has taken one view and the developer has taken another view. Now, obviously this is, uh, two professionals. Um, and, uh, is, it really hinges, I would say, on the difference of opinion in terms of assessing, um, the, the area of however we're describing it, woodland, scrub, um, self-seeded trees, however you want to describe it within that car park area. That's the, that's the key issue. So, um, I'm not an ecology specialist. Um, I have taken or sought to take a balanced view as an officer, using information from both sides and obviously my own interpretation of the information that's been presented to me. Um, the, my, my conclusion is that, um, the applicant has provided, uh, sufficient evidence, uh, of their, of their view on this, has provided further detail of a, a range of mitigation measures and enhancement measures, uh, with respect to biodiversity. Uh, they have gone through the exercise of, um, uh, running, running through that detail and putting it through this DEFRA metric. Um, and it really, as far as I can see, is coming down to that interpretation of whether that particular part of the site, uh, is a priority woodland or, or not. Um, my view, and as I expressed in my opening, uh, comments, uh, is that because it has developed within the context of what was a developed site on that particular part of the site, my, my officer view was that actually the value of that would be, uh, relatively low. Um, I, I feel satisfied with the information that's been presented to me as an officer to, to recommend it with regard, with regard to that particular aspect. Um, as I say, um, the, the professionals have got two opposing views and hence why, um, the sort of objection is being, being maintained by ecology in terms of, uh, with respect to that woodland or however you want to describe it. However, the applicant has also said that even if they were to include the woodland, if they did consider it and they don't agree with that, that conclusion, uh, if they were to include that within the metric, they would still come to, still get to a, a positive. But I suppose, like with anything in life, it's about, you know, two professionals, um, interpreting, uh, data and attributing value to it. Um, as I say, I'm not an ecology specialist. I'm not a, a specialist on, on the metric and how that works. But I feel as an officer that sufficient information has been submitted to us and for us to have come to that particular conclusion. In terms of other elements that our ecology officer raised, uh, within their original objection, um, the applicant has provided more information, more, um, sort of survey information in terms of the, um, reptiles and vertebrates and so on. Uh, and I think it's fairly minor, minor points that were outstanding with that, with respect to that. Um, and also in terms of the water course, the EA, who, sorry, the Environment Agency, who, if you like, are the, the, um, you know, they're the government agency, the arbiters of, um, works with respect to proximity to water courses. They have been satisfied with, with the information that's been presented. Um, so I think overall, um, I'm, you know, I, I have, um, put forward the recommendation for approval on that basis. Uh, hopefully, um, that answers the question satisfactorily. If I've missed anything, please just tell me. I'll mute for a moment.
I'm sure we will. Councillor Williams, do you have any follow-ups on your question or is that sufficiently clear?
Um, I wonder if I could just follow up briefly. I realize it's getting, I apologize, Chair. Um, thank you very much to the officer, that, that did clarify quite a lot. I think what I'm, I think what I'm coming to is there are two professional views and the officer has come to her own opinion on those. But I don't feel qualified to come to my own opinion as a member of PAC on those two opposing views because I don't have in front of me that DEFRA metrics and that generates the biodiversity score, unless you're going to tell me it's in the report and I've missed it. Um, and I don't have the ecologist's opinion, which I think, um, was only given today, their analysis of that score, which led them to believe that it was wrong. So I'm not sure how I can therefore, as a member of the committee, come to a decision on which professional is more likely to be right. Um, so I'm going to back out at that point, Chair, and see if anyone proposes anything on this, um, whether to move ahead with this application and consider my position. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Williams.
May I just? Oh, I was just going to say one more point just in response to that. Um, so apologies because obviously this information, uh, further information has come in, uh, today. And because of the way, you know, we are operating now, it becomes quite tricky to then disseminate stuff very, very quickly. So I, I've, I've sort of given you a, tried to give you a summary of that. But the applicant did provide, uh, a full sort of, uh, Excel metric, uh, a covering letter. Um, and then I forwarded that over to our own ecologist, who came back with a very quick response, which I've, I've tried to just summarize because again, he, you know, it was, it was quite late in the day. So, uh, it was all getting, you know, uh, quite close to committee to actually sort of express all of that. Um, but yeah, I do have all of that. I just hadn't circulated it because it did come in very late, but apologies. It's just not as easy now, it seems, even though we have technology to really let people read. It wouldn't, you wouldn't really have had much of a chance to read it all. So I've tried my best, so.
Thank you, Alison. Councillor Sukala, you've indicated.
Thank you, Chair. Um, follow up on both what Alison has talked about, but also Josh, because I'm maybe suggesting that could we propose basically accepting this, but with the caveat that it comes back toward councillors and obviously yourself, Chair, to have discussion about the ecology elements that we received quite late in day to day? And also maybe the landscape as well, because that's something that I know all my colleagues and I have concerns about. So we accept it on the basis it's beneficial in terms of the economy and other aspects. But, um, we caveat it, so we see that again in terms of the conditions for ecology and L4, um, the landscape management and maintenance. Okay, am I right in proposing that? Is that wrong?
Um, asking for a little bit of certainty on what you want because as councillor Josh Williams was speaking, it was about whether or not biodiversity net gain, which is the technical calculation is achieved. That would be a material consideration to the, where we are in the planning balance.
Okay.
If you are not content to proceed on that basis, I wouldn't feel comfortable moving to the vote. If it is simply that you want consultation on the landscaping, as is previously indicated, to ensure that it is delivered appropriately and with appropriate management, including on the flood, that would be appropriate. Is that where we are?
I, I have a, I have the desire to have consultations on L4 and obviously the flooding. However, I do think it's important that we do get clarity about that question that councillor Josh Williams asked, because I think that's a really valid, however, if that's a material consideration, then I understand that we can't propose and accept it with those caveats. So I'll, I'll leave that to you to make a decision about if we go to a vote or not. But yeah, that, that's my requirement. I just want to see that as well, to see those calculations and make sure that we're all happy with that as well.
Okay. So what I'll say is, as I have an understanding of the calculations, the DEFRA criteria and our policies for biodiversity net gain, within the planning balance, I'm comfortable to proceed because also as Ward councillor, I'm quite familiar with the area and my own judgment that is essentially scrub land on land that is allocated within our local plan for core employment. But the economic benefits on a site which still achieves a net gain, even if in dispute it may be less than 10%, is sufficient basis to proceed to the vote and to accept this planning application. Do councillors dissent from that view? Great. Then I suggest that we move forward with the vote. Councillors may choose to refuse, abstain or vote for when we move to the officer recommendation. Yes, please.
Is there already a flood condition? Um, I'm just asking the officers, is there already a flood condition that, um, that there or do, is councillor Shukle's request to have one, is that, that need to be added in?
Uh, no, it's already there, it's fully existing. She just wishes to be consulted on it.
Okay, I just couldn't see which one it was. I'll just put, yeah, that's fine then.
Nikki, Nikki, it's Alison. Sorry, on the recommendation, uh, part, it's the one, it's the SUDs one. So it's, it's labelled twenty-one and twenty-two at the moment.
S U seven. Okay, thank you. Lovely.
Grand. So at this point, I will ask if councillor Devine is in the meeting. I feel that silence would indicate that he is not. I will then move forward with the vote on this item, proposing that we accept the officer report with the conditions as stated and the consultation as indicated by councillor Sukala. And I will then ask councillors if they're, if they will vote within alphabetical order. As councillor Devine is not within this meeting, we will then move to councillor Joe Lovelock. Could you please indicate if you vote for, against or abstain?
I'm for the proposal, Chair.
Councillor McKernan?
I'm for the proposal.
Councillor Page?
I'm for.
Councillor Robinson?
Uh, for the proposal.
Councillor Roland?
For.
Councillor Sukala? Councillor Sukala, are you off mute?
About that, I couldn't get to my mute button. Um.
For, against or abstain?
I'm going to abstain on this one, that's okay.
Agreed, thank you. As Chair, I say each councillor is responsible for their own vote and they never have to apologize or ask if it's okay. Councillor Stamford-Bale?
Thank you.
Thank you. I've recorded that as a for. Councillor Josh Williams?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm against this due to the lack of evidence. Thank you.
Thank you. Then as Chair, I will vote for and welcome the proposal to Whitley. And that decision is then carried. I will then draw this meeting to a close and thank councillors and officers for attending. Before I do so, I will ask if officers require any clarification on any of our decisions made. Then I will dismiss you all to enjoy your wonderful evenings.
Thank you, Chair.
And we'll see you all in the new year. Because our next meeting is in early January.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.